Good evening. It's now the seven o'clock hour on Thursday, September 24th, 2020, and I call the meeting of the Bellevue Planning Commission to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Perrin?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Arnie?
Present.
Mr. Ritz? Mr. Ackley?
Here.
Mr. Hankins?
Here.
Ms. Cutsforth?
Present.
Mr. Jacobson? This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act, a copy of which can be found in the back vestibule of this hearing room. At this time, I would ask all commissioners and all audience members to silence their phones, please, pagers if anybody still has those, and any other device that could disrupt our proceedings. Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to revise or approve the Planning Commission's meeting minutes for August 27th, 2020, regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the August 27th, 2020, regular meeting. Second?
Second by, or, motion by Casey, second by Hankins. Please vote.
Six voted yes, one abstained, motion carried.
At this time, I'd like to accept into the record all staff reports, attachments, memos, and handouts regarding each application. Staff, any updates or additions since the package was mailed last week?
Yes, you have a, some additional emails that were forwarded to you earlier today, and you also have been provided copies this evening. We have one revised email from, I apologize if I am not going to say this right, Amy Correvue in opposition to Agenda Item Number, Agenda Item 3D. She submitted a letter earlier but revised her site plan and her pictures that she provided. We also received two emails in opposition to Agenda Item Number 3E, one from Ms. Laura Wyman, and one from Ms. Joan Bush, again, both in opposition to the proposal.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the application materials we have as augmented this evening by the city.
Second?
Motion by Ackley, second by Kane. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
We have no consent agenda items. We will move into the public hearing section. Before I begin, if we could ask those who are here for the first item to remain in the room, and those who are here for other subsequent items to please go into the hallway due to the spacing issue. And then we will call, when we call the next one, obviously, you know, if that's your, that's what you're here for, please come in for that one. We have five items for public hearing this evening. I will announce the case for each one, and then ask if there are any updates from the Planning Department. After that, the applicant will have an opportunity to present their case. After the applicant has been heard, the public will be allowed to provide any testimony that they may like to have considered on the record. Those testifying should come to the podium, state their name, and spell their name, and sign in for the record. Testimony should be limited to five minutes, and I reserve the right to shorten that time if we have a large number of people coming forward to testify. After any testimony is taken, the applicant shall have the opportunity for rebuttal, after which we will close the public hearing. And I'm just going to remind everybody about the golden rule. Treat others who are speaking in the same manner as you would like to be treated when you are speaking. Our first public hearing is a request for a conditional use permit for Lot 2-1 Cornhusker Place for the purpose of auto sales. Applicants James Howe and John Beckby. General location, 2204 Pratt Avenue, case number CUP-2006-01. Any updates, staff?
No updates on this one.
I take it you are the applicants?
Yeah, I'm the current owner, yeah.
You could please sign in, sign your names and addresses on the sheet in front of you?
Yeah, you would sign, sign the form in front of you.
Absolutely.
I, that's all right, I forgot I brought it.
Okay, if you could state your name and address for the record, please, and then go ahead with your request.
My name's James Howe, H-O-W-E.
John Beckby. B-E-C-K-B-Y.
And could you explain about your request?
We're requesting for 10 spots. I have a local repair shop here up on Cornhusker, and we have 41 spaces available. Sometimes our lot gets tight. Sometimes customers will want to leave their vehicle, or they'll give up on their vehicle that, you know, and they want us to sell it for them, or repurpose it or take it to salvage. And we, we started doing that with customers, you know, they'd sell it to us, or they'd leave it for us to junk, or they'd want us to fix it. And they'd try to either sell it to another customer, or one of, and I said, you know, we should just do it legit and have a sales license, and that way it would, it would take 10 spots at the bottom end of the lot that we're not using. Employee parking here, 10 spots here. It forces us to keep mechanical flow going. And when those customers want to opt out to leave a car or something, you say, you know, we have a program, you can put it in here in our sales spot, or you need to get it off our property. So we keep in code with the city of Bellevue for code enforcement as well. John's a, he's the owner of Motor Pool here in town. He has a good record, he's a good dealer, and we'd become united and sell off those 10 spots.
I'd basically be the sales manager and handle all the paperwork so everything's done.
He'd handle that and, yeah, and then I'd keep running my repair shop. Tuffy's Corporate has already said I could do it through a franchise. The landlord, I spoke with him as well. We plan on purchasing that property, and the landlord's okay with it. He thinks it's going to be good for future use. It doesn't define it as a, as a car lot, and it doesn't, it keeps things clean and organized, and it gives us that extra added opportunity for some revenues. Our building lease is somewhere around $8,000 a month. That helps offset some of the expense as well. This is kind of what we're looking to do.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to testify regarding this matter? Okay, if not, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
May I ask staff a question? With Pratt Avenue being so congested with menards, does the city, will there ever be any new inlets or outlets, kind of by DJ's dugout? Kind of that steep hill, or that's not possible?
I guess when you say inlets and outlets.
Like another entrance to the area. Right now, there's only two.
Right, eventually there could be, let me pull up GIS. So here's DJ's dugout right here, where my arrow is. Eventually, when this vacant ground develops, yes, you would have South 23rd Street come through, and you would have opportunity for access on South 25th. So yes, eventually, but it just depends on how quickly this vacant parcel develops.
Thank you.
Question for staff, too?
Go ahead.
Tammy, how many parking stalls are required for the mechanical, mechanic's shop? I didn't see that in the staff report.
Let me get that, it's based on the size.
Or a five bay.
They're required one for each 400 square feet of floor area. It was calculated, they, they are okay on parking, or else we wouldn't have been okay with the site plan they put forward.
Okay. Do you have the, if you could just pull up the aerial, no, it's with the, with the packet, the scimmittal, I guess? There's an aerial with the scimmittal, and just, just want to ask the applicant a question. So on this, let's like get it up here, then I'll ask you.
We'll try a different way.
No, I wanted to look at the aerial, the aerial photo that shows the cars. That's, that's my, that's what she's trying to pull up, I know.
You want the aerial photo, or you want the site plan?
No, the aerial photo. Right there, so, so if I look at that parking lot right there, is that a pretty normal scenario day to day where all them stalls are full like that? My concern is, by granting you those 10 stalls to park, I looked back at other historical aerial photos from previous years, and there's times where it looks like you have vehicles parked on the grass because you're full. My only concern is, we're now going to add a potential for 10 more vehicles on that lot. So how, how often does this scenario happen?
You know, we'll go, I'll clean things up on a Sunday. We'll get in there, clean things up, make customers pickups, items. A lot of times it becomes financial issues, the customer doesn't want to pay, things like that. We'll work things out, and I can get the lot down to, you know, six, eight cars. Sometimes we'll have it cleaned out. And then you'll take 15-day run of a cold snap or something, and we'll pop that lot right back full. With five bays, we have eight employees, and we work, you know, when we can, you'll come up there on some days, we'll have five bays going, and two or three cars behind the bays working. Then other days, it's very manageable. We feel like having those 10 designated areas forces us, forces our hand. I mean, hey Todd, you know, we have your car done. It'd be nice if you could pick it up tonight, would there be a problem if we deliver it to you? You know, it would, it would, it helps me maintain the revenues and the, and the business plan I have in place. It also keeps, it keeps everybody honest, keeps cars that are starting to come out of plate, a tag that's a month old. It, it's better for the, I feel it's very good for us, it's manageable, it's very manageable, and it's very good for the city as far as code enforcement goes, to know that those are 10 dealer spots, they're all checked out, those are customers, there's no excuses, we're clean. We have had code enforcement there a couple of times when we're super busy. One of my guys won't listen, they'll park one on the grass. I explain to them that this is Bellevue, don't park on the grass. I don't want to park on the grass, I spend a lot of money. And sure enough, code enforcement might be at Donna Millie's. They're very polite, they'll come over and say, Jimmy, you can't park on the grass. I know. We know not to park on the grass. The two areas we had in grass parking have been, they're both concrete pad, and they're, you know, we're approved, and concrete pads, so we put there. The cars that'll be for sale are in the back part, so I feel like it'll really help us.
Okay.
Help both of us.
Mr. Arnie, the most recent aerial is, is being shown up on GIS right now.
Yeah, I've looked at like half a dozen between Google Earth and this one. I mean, they're, they're, that's a good picture there, you know. If that's a normal day, then I don't have near as many concerns as the one that you submitted that is full, right?
Yeah, today we had seven, eight spots empty, and then here comes a tractor from Buckley's, and here comes a, a car drop-off, and two drop-offs right when I was leaving, and so then you're full back up. But it, one thing we do do, if there's any space at all inside our shop, everything goes in. If we can put one up and put one under, we do that. I, I just cleared two extra spots inside my shop now. We moved some machinery around and built a catwalk, so we can get one, two, seven in, go up and get two or three more under. You can get about 10 cars in if we have to.
Okay.
We'd maintain whatever commitment we make.
Okay, thank you very much.
There's no further comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion. Seeing none, I'd make a motion to approve this application based upon conformance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance and a lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area. Second?
Motion by Ackley, second by Arnie. Please vote.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, the motion is approved. This item will go to the City Council for public hearing on October 20th.
Okay, what does that mean, it just goes to the next step?
Right, this is a recommendation for approval that goes to the City Council, it's not the final say. So then it goes to the City Council for the public hearing.
We appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Thanks for everything.
Okay, our second public hearing is a request to rezone lots 1 through 136, and outlots A, B, and C, Clearwater Estates, being a plating of part of south, of the south half of the southeast quarter, located in Section 7, Township 13 North, Range 13 East, of the 6th Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RS 120, for the purpose of single-family residential development.
Ms. Chair, if I could stop you, you're reading the wrong one.
Oh, whoops.
It should be Bell Lago South.
I got ahead of myself, sorry. Okay, here we go. This is a hearing for the request to rezone lots 122 through 126, Bell Lago South, being a plating of a tract of land located in part of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 8, Township 13 North, Range 13 East, of the 6th Prime Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to RG 50 PS, for the purpose of single-family residential development, and preliminary plat lots 122 through 124, Bell Lago South. Applicant, HC Bell Lago LLC. General location, Looking Glass Drive and South 45th Street. Case numbers, Z 2007 08 and S 2007 16. And the applicant is here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. I got a little worried there for a minute, I was doing the wrong thing.
No, Ricky at the helm, sorry.
So, no, you're fine. So I'm here tonight to essentially, what was contemplated as part of the original Bell Lago South subdivision. Some of you, I think, were actually on the Planning Commission at that time, but if you recall, and I do have the final plat for the Bell Lago South subdivision, so that's the final plat. And so what, when we were going through that process on Bell Lago South, it was also, it was actually discussed that we should really extend Looking Glass Drive, and I highlighted it in red or outlined it in red. That actually is outlined on the final plat that was approved by the City Council of Bellevue back in 2018, I believe. The idea was to extend Looking Glass, so if you see Clearwater Falls, we wouldn't just have two ways onto 48th Street for now. We would have three ways onto 48th Street through Clearwater Falls. And the, I think, I believe it was 42nd Street and 44th Street would have been really a circuitous route through Clearwater Falls. So the idea was to extend Looking Glass to 45th, so it'd be less intrusive to the Clearwater Falls neighborhood by allowing that access at 45th. So in the subdivision agreement that we had on Bell Lago South, the plant, the City Council actually permitted the power of eminent domain to acquire Looking Glass right away. We ended up entering into an amicable agreement with the property owner to extend Looking Glass. In so doing, we created surplus property, kind of in the interim there where she's pointing, that created three buildable lots. These three buildable lots will be essentially the exact same style and size as the lots in Bell Lago South. So it's really just an extension of three lots, and the extension of Looking Glass to 45th. Now, eventually, obviously, Looking Glass Drive will be extended to 48th Street, and then that will be a more direct access between 36th and 48th Street on Looking Glass Drive, and then no one will probably end up going through the Clearwater Falls neighborhood, but this is really the only access for now. So again, it was, it was originally contemplated as part of the Bell Lago South final plat subdivision agreement and zoning. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is there anybody from the public who wishes to come forward and speak about this?
Hi, my name's Jennifer Hobbs. I actually live on the dead end of 45th Street, right there.
Ma'am, if I could, if I could stop you, could you sign in, please? Your name and address, thank you.
Yeah, so if you look at that plot of land and you go up just a little bit, you'll see Sheridan Drive. Well, there's a stop sign on Sheridan Drive that no one stops at. So my concern is that this is going to turn into a speedway straight to Lewis and Clark Middle School, which is located just slightly to the right. So Looking Glass will kind of, people will then, instead of going through the neighborhood and around, they're going to go right up Sheridan, onto Looking Glass, and then speed right through there. My concern is, as a parent of two young children, and a ton of children play on Sheridan Road, and up and down 45th Street, so I feel like if you're going to continue with Looking Glass, please at least consider doing a traffic study in the morning and in the afternoon, because very few people stop at that stop sign, and I feel like it might be a safety hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could you sign in, please, and?
Yes. So my name is Tricia Wallen. I live also on 45th Street. I'm in, can't see the number, 343, right next door to Jennifer Hobbs, who just spoke. I concur completely with her on her traffic concerns, both with the stop sign, and also with the opening up of another way to the with the, uh, opening up of another way to, uh, the Lewis and Clark, uh, Middle School. I don't think it would be a good idea to open up a new traffic way. I've lived in five different school districts over four or five different states. And Lewis and Clark right now has the best flow of traffic pattern of any school I've ever seen, and to interrupt that and cause congestion from traffic coming from a second side would just cause a lot of problems. So I agree that doing a traffic study before you open that road. I also, I don't necessarily agree that if your long-term plan is to open Looking Glass all the way to Forty-Eighth Street, I do not see the purpose of opening up our road just for a short term, just so that you can build three more houses. If you want to, right now Looking Glass is a cul-de-sac. If you want to extend the cul-de-sac, so if you want them to access from, from where Looking Glass access is already, it would be a straight shot to their houses without interrupting our neighborhood. I, I, I don't, I don't want the, the road there, that's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Jovan, would you like a chance to respond to?
One moment, Ms. Chair, we have more people in the other floor room that want to speak on this one, so hold that thought, Mr. Jovan.
We're fine, they don't want to speak on us one after all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jovan.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty, Western Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. What I'd point out, um, to the commission is that the purpose wasn't to create three lots, the purpose was to extend Looking Glass to Forty-Fifth Street, ultimately Looking Glass going to Forty-Eighth Street. But to dedicate Looking Glass created that surplus property between Looking Glass and the orientation of Looking Glass and, uh, the neighborhood of Clearwater Falls. I mean, you'll notice there's Forty-Second Street, there's Forty-Fourth Street. The city council wanted to see another, uh, access point on, on, uh, Forty-Fifth Street to extend Looking Glass. And it was really to kind of spread the traffic throughout, uh, Clearwater Falls. And, and obviously ultimately when Looking Glass becomes extended to Forty-Fifth Street, um, that would be the most direct access. You notice the, again, these are lots that are being created, the three lots that are being created in this area right here are the exact same as the lots that are along, uh, the Clearwater Falls neighborhood as it exists today. And those lots are in the process of currently being developed, I think it's all graded out now, and we're starting to put in public infrastructure there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but again, this was always contemplated as part of the original Bell Lago South subdivision.
Okay, I will now close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners.
May I speak again?
Okay, well, before closing it, yes. No, I mean, go ahead.
So I, I also have some questions and maybe I'm.
Ma'am, one moment, can you state your name again for the reference?
Tracea Wallen.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Um, I have a couple of questions. Our property where we live is, um, Sarpy County, not part of Bellevue City. Can you clarify for me, is the Bellevue City line, uh, uh, because this is Bellevue City Council meeting. So I'm, is the city line right there on our property line?
I can clarify, so even though Clearwater Falls is not currently in the city limits, uh, the city of Bellevue has zoning jurisdiction over this area because we have jurisdiction outside that city limit line.
Okay.
Um, so, because we have jurisdiction, the developer has to follow our zoning regulations and our subdivision regulations, and the city has the jurisdiction to approve, um, or deny the, the plating and rezoning that's requested.
No, thank you for answering my question. Then, the, the other thing, just as watching the neighborhood patterns, I know how we live, if the intent, again, is to, to have Looking Glass, um, extend to Forty-Eighth Street, the people who, who live, uh, your, your recommendation to open up Forty-Fifth Street into Looking Glass is to create further access. But everyone who, if you notice, there's the big green space and then also the, the middle school. There's no way that anybody that lives on the forty, excuse me, the Forty-Fifth Street and to the left, there's no reason why we would want to cut through the neighborhood to get to Thirty-S sixth Street to sit, to, to cut through all that traffic before we can get to K Part. Because we have a straight shot right out of Sheridan to Forty-Eighth and to, and that would be the same thing once, i- if you were to open that road. I just don't see a good purpose to open the road right there and to open it so that, if you're saying you don't, I, I, I'm hearing partly that you want to open up Clearwater Falls, and then I'm also hearing that you don't want to open Clearwater Falls. And I think that the roads in and out of Clearwater Falls right now serve our purposes very well. I, I, I don't see a need to open up our road for it.
If I may, and I know this won't be popular, but if you zoom in on your subdivision a little bit, where you and your neighbor who testified tonight built, I mean, that is designed as a stub road meant to go into the next subdivision. Again, when these developments initially come, you know, they come in a forty acre, sixty acre, eighty acre tract, we never know what's going to go around them.
Right, and we knew that that might happen.
Right, so from a planning perspective, we intentionally designed so that there are stub roads to connect to the next development. When Bell Lago came a couple of years ago, I was on the commission, and again, the way that land that they bought lined up, nothing lined up with what would have connectivity into Clearwater Falls, with the exception of the one right there where she's got the pointer on. And one of the requirements we had from a connectivity standpoint was, and part of it is fire and safety, we need to make sure if there's an issue with accessing a development from one area, that we've got the ability to get fire trucks, police, whatever other rescue ambulance we need through another area. And we required them to acquire that corner so that we could hook up Looking Glass with the road that goes in front of your house.
That makes sense, um, how soon are the other houses that are supposed to come in behind that, that Sheridan Road that has like six or eight houses there?
Sure.
I mean, a- and extending Looking House Dr- Looking Glass all the way to Forty-Eighth, how much far in the future is that? I mean, does that, d- does that building right there have to happen now, and why is it happening before we get the road?
Part of it, ma'am, is when we approved Bell Lago to the north, we required they have one more access, and they had to go in and buy that little notch. And to Mr. Jovan's point, as long as they had to buy that notch, they're putting three more lots next to you. And again, eventually, when the rest of that development comes in, at some point, it will, uh, that's when the houses and the rest of the roads will go in.
But do developers own that land that's behind that right now, that Looking Glass will, will eventually, or does the farmer still own that?
I am unaware of who the current owner is.
Cause there's still, there's still corn on it.
Sure, again, it's, we, we try to master plans so that we can figure out how the city's going to keep growing and connect. And when Bell Lago came in, that was one of them, we wanted to make sure we hooked up with Clearwater Falls. And obviously, when Clearwater Falls was developed, that stub road went to the edge, knowing that at some point, we're going to connect into the next development. So again, it's, uh, it's good news that you said you knew that when you moved there, because yeah, stub road is different than a cul-de-sac. We get some folks come in and they're shocked that the road is suddenly going to keep going. Um, I'm glad to hear you're not shocked about that.
Yeah, no, no.
But that's the reason we're doing it, for connectivity between subdivisions. And for all the reasons that were raised in terms of the traffic and safety, we will certainly encourage the city, if there's a stoplight there or stop sign not being enforced. Again, I think once you see, my guess is, people are just zipping through it, because there's no traffic, you look left and there's nobody there, they just zip through, right?
Uh, there actually, during peak times, there is a lot of traffic.
Yeah, but I mean, that's why they're not stopping, I think, to your point, because there's no ro- there's no traffic coming down from Looking Glass currently. I think once that gets opened up, people are going to start paying more attention on stopping.
Yeah, and included on the traffic, the other concern that we have is right now, um, people are parking on both sides of the roads, and you can barely get one, one car through. And their school buses are taking that route in to the school also. So if you were to open that as a thoroughfare, it's not wide enough.
A- actually, I guess.
Unless you put a sign to say, don't park on one side of the road at least.
Right.
So that we can still get the cars through there.
And I guess that's a question for Ms. Palm, I don't know if neighborhoods need to petition for that, but I know we're designated one side of the other houses for parking.
That's in, that's on city streets, this is an SID. So if at such time it's annexed by the city, most definitely, you'll only park on one side of the street. If you want to make that request, the people to make that request to would be your SID board. Um, because then they get formal approval from the county, and typically the county will go ahead and do that if the SID wants it. Uh, but that would be the place to start, would be with the SID board and say, hey, this is an issue. Um, we'd like to, for you to take this under consideration.
Good, thank you, good information, thank you.
No, thanks for coming.
Commissioners, or I close the public hearing. Commissioners, your wishes?
If there's no other comments or questions, I'd be prepared to make a motion. Seeing none, I recommend approval of this application based on conformance with the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, subdivision regulations, and a lack of perceived negative impact to the surrounding area, since this is what we requested at Bell Lago and we approved that some number of years ago.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Ackley, a second by Commissioner Kane. Please vote. Mr. Ackley?
Yes, it just popped up, and I'm trying to get my mouse over there. My mouse isn't, there we go.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, the motion was approved, and this item, again, will go to the city council for public hearing on October twentieth, twenty twenty. Our next public hearing is a request to rezone, oh, sorry, request to approve the redevelopment plan for lots nine through eleven, South Woods. Applicant, South Woods Manager LLC, general location Nebraska Drive and Child's Road West, case number ECD number forty-seven. I'm going to allow a little bit of time here for people to come in.
Mr. Jovan can go ahead and start.
Um, okay, I want to make a statement on the record here before you begin, Mr. Jovan.
Sure.
Uh, in the interest of full disclosure, I do have a friend who is a homeowner whose property, uh, backs up to the lots in question for this evening. However, I, I am able to be fair, I do not, do not have a conflict, but I did want to make that relationship transparent.
Sure, thank you for that. Uh, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty, Western Road appearing on behalf of the applicant with me tonight is Kathy, Cassie, uh, Ennis of, uh, Apogee Professional Services Group, uh, and then also, uh, who's on behalf of the applicant, also Reagan Pence of Lampard Neersen, who's a landscape architect working on this particular project. Um, the existing conditions, this is about four and a half acres. It is currently undeveloped and has been subdivided and undeveloped for over fifty years, believe that or not. Um, it's, uh, currently lots nine, ten, and eleven, South Woods, uh, with the next, um, item on the agenda, there is a small subdivision that will combine them into one lot. The, um, property is already designated blighted and substandard by the city of Bellevue, I think it was done in two thousand ten or two thousand thirteen. Um, so it already lends itself for a redevelopment plan and a redevelopment agreement for this particular site. Um, the redevelopment plan itself is consistent with the comprehensive development plan of the city of Bellevue and, uh, and which designates this property as a multifamily residential, um, property. In fact, this property actually is already zoned, RG eight and RG eight planned subdivision, so that's the current zoning today. So it's consistent with the comp plan, it's already zoned for multifamily, and it's already designated blighted and substandard, so it's pretty ripe for redevelopment. Um, so the project itself is a hundred and seven unit multifamily housing project, we'll get in more, uh, the details about that on the zoning, uh, case, uh, which is the next agenda item. This is the redevelopment plan, so what we're looking at here is an expected valuation on full buildout of about fifteen and a half million dollars. Um, their TIF eligible expenses are a little over one point seven million. Uh, they are to go towards acquisition, public improvement costs and site preparation costs, it's a relatively difficult site, there's a large easement that goes through and power lines, uh, that make part of the property unbuildable. Also, on the north side of the property, it slopes down, uh, pretty good towards a Columbus Street. So the TIF request itself is in the principal amount of one point seven million dollars, a little over that. And we believe that it meets all the requirements under the community development laws of the state of Nebraska. Uh, we, uh, appreciate the recommendation of the, uh, planning staff as well, and we're here to answer any questions on this particular matter. And we'll get in more details on the zoning and the plating on the next agenda item.
Before I open this up to the public, I would just request that if you are here and your questions pertain to parking or traffic or, uh, the amount of units, if you could have those questions for the next hearing right behind this, which is about the zoning request. This is specifically for the redevelopment plan, so the tax increment financing and so forth. So with that in mind, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this matter related to the redevelopment plan? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I've reviewed the redevelopment plan, it looks consistent with our community redevelopment law and other TIF applications that we've had. Again, it's a good infill site, it has been vacant for as long as I've been in Bellevue, which is twenty-five years, and as Mr. Jovan indicated, probably closer to fifty. Um, I think it's a good infill development, which absent the tax increment financing would likely not occur, which is why it's been vacant for so long.
So unless anyone else has questions or comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion. I'd recommend approval of this South Woods Manager LLC redevelopment plan based on conformance with our comprehensive plan, the elimination of a blighted and substandard area, and conformance with the requirements of the state statutes and the opportunity for redevelopment along the Child's Road corridor.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ackley, second by Commissioner Arnie. Please vote. Any further discussion?
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, this motion was approved, and again, the item will go to the public hearing at the city council, uh, on October twentieth. Our next public hearing is a request to rezone lot one, South Wood, South Woods replat four, being a replat of lots nine through eleven, South Woods from RG eight to RG eight PS, or, and RG eight PS to RG eight PS, for the purpose of multifamily residential development with site plan approval and small subdivision plat lot one, South Woods replat four. Applicant, Apogee Professional Services, general location Child's Road and Nebraska Drive, case numbers Z two thousand eight dash eleven and S two thousand eight dash nineteen. Mr. Jovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Larry Jovan, one hundred and fourteen forty, Western Road appearing on behalf of the applicant. Again, with me tonight is Cassie Ennis of Apogee Professional Services on behalf of the applicant, as well as Reagan Pence of Lampard Neersen, the, uh, landscape architect that, uh, put the site plan together. So, again, it's four and a half acres of property. It's, uh, currently undeveloped and has been for over fifty years, as we discussed in the previous item. It is currently comprised of three lots. Uh, there's a small subdivision that's also part of this particular item on the agenda that would do a lot combination in two lot. One, Southwoods Replat Four. Uh, the property is also currently zoned, as you know, as we spoke last time, RG eight and RG eight planned subdivision. So really, the idea with respect to the zoning and the small subdivision is just to combine it into one lot and then also make the zoning consistent with the three lots that, uh, are currently there that will be brought into one. So you don't want to have, um, inconsistent zoning on one particular lot. And it obviously makes sense to, to, uh, have one lot and one zoning classification on this particular property. Um, so again, we, uh, this is the site plan. It calls for a hundred and seven multifamily unit, uh, housing project in three buildings. Uh, here, here, and here. Uh, the, all three buildings are three stories in height. Uh, two buildings contain thirty-six units each and one, um, building contains uh, thirty-five units plus the leasing office. If you want to go back to the site plan, I'll point that out too, so that you can see where the green space is. So this is the building that has thirty-five units with the, uh, clubhouse. Here's the open space for the, the clubhouse itself. The, uh, setback along the neighborhood, which would be, uh, this is to the north, by the way, and this is to the south. So this would be to the, uh,
West.
West, obviously. A little turned around here. Uh, it's about, uh, the, the buffer yard here is thirty feet in width, uh, with, uh, as you can see, quite a bit of landscaping and I believe some birmingham a- along that separates this project from the, uh, single family neighborhood, uh, to the west. In this particular area here, the buffer yard is actually about sixty feet in width, so it's, it's much larger in this area. Here's the area that I talked about, that is the, uh, overhead power lines that makes it, uh, unbuildable. I believe it's about a, a seventy foot in width, uh, power line easement that you cannot build under. So that's up to your location. The project gets its access off of Nebraska Avenue in this particular location. And then also off of Child's, uh, Road in this particular location. There's no access through the neighborhood whatsoever. There's no connectivity, uh, to the neighborhood to the west whatsoever either. Uh, the height of the buildings are forty-two feet to the very top of the peak and, uh, thirty-one feet to the eve. But you notice that two of the buildings, uh, are really along Nebraska Avenue and do not share, you know, the, any neighbors here, just the right away. And then this, uh, property here to the east, there's only one building in this particular location. So I think a lot of thought was given to try to minimize the impact, um, with the height of the buildings and also putting one building adjacent to the residential neighborhood to the west. And then also providing this, uh, a significant amount of landscaping and all, and, uh, also the thirty-foot buffer, which is required. And, uh, we met. As far as the unit mix itself, there of the hundred and seventy units, sixty-four units are efficiency one-bedroom units. There are thirty-five two-bedroom units and, uh, eight three-bedroom units. The average rental rate for these units is eleven hundred dollars a month, so it is a market rate project. It is not affordable housing, low income housing tax, uh, credit project whatsoever. This is market rate rents, uh, and, uh, financed accordingly. As far as the amenities, I pointed out the clubhouse again, uh, and has a fitness center, a package locker. There's a courtyard, as I showed you earlier here, with, uh, grills and outdoor, uh, gathering spaces. There are a number of parking garages here that you see the smaller buildings. And, uh, with respect to the parking, there are two hundred and nine parking spaces provided. There's a hundred and thirty-seven surface parking spaces. There's fifty detached garages that again are in those small buildings that, uh, are on the sides of the, the other buildings and, uh, here. You notice that there's nothing being built here, so that, that's the other issue. The, the property itself is not the most efficient because you can't really build here and then it, then it gives no room uh, for any kind of structures in this location either. So you can see everything has to be really on the south side of the property to have any kind of density. I would point out that, um, that the density, it could support, uh, a density, I believe, of two hundred and fifteen units. So we're only at a hundred and seven units, so it's much less than we could actually construct if we were going to maximize the density on this particular site. So it's, it's not like we're overbuilding the site at all. Um, as far as the building materials, I would call the building materials, uh, a class A type apartment. There you go, thank you. Um, as you can see there, I've, I can get into the materials that are being used, but I would call the materials of the building a class A type project. It's probably more of an A minus, B plus, only because it doesn't have some of the amenities, like a swimming pool and things like that. But it does have the outdoor, uh, grilling areas, the gathering space and the fitness center and such. So I would call it a B plus, A minus. But with respect to the material choices on the building, I believe it would be classified as a, uh, a, uh, project. The, with that, the construction is anticipated to be April of twenty twenty-one, assuming we get all of our approvals in place. It's about a sixteen-month buildout and we appreciate the recommendation of the, uh, planning staff and I'm happy to answer any questions. I guess I should add, um, there's, there's twenty-two parking stalls along Nebraska Ave, too, that goes into the parking count. It's my understanding is that, uh, Nebraska Avenue is about a forty-four feet in width, uh, the paving, and it actually was designed to accommodate on-street parking, from what I understand. Um, and so it is wide enough to allow for parking on-street at Nebraska Avenue without any impairment to the free flow of, of access onto Nebraska Avenue. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and I obviously respond to any opposition that there may be on this particular mi- matter.
Okay, uh, before we go to public comment, uh, just be aware that there is a five-minute limit on testimony. And again, uh, I stated this as most people were leaving the room, but I just want to repeat. Let's recognize the golden rule, so treat everybody who's up here speaking the way you would want to be treated if you were up here. So is there anybody from the public that wishes to come forward and speak on this topic? If you could please approach the podium and sign your in, please, and then state your name and address for the record.
It's, uh, Jim Campbell, fifty-eight twenty-three, South twenty, or Columbus Avenue. And, uh, I mean, I know there's a lot of concerns from the people that live right behind it. I'm within three hundred feet of it, right on the corner, basically. Uh, my big thing is traffic. You've already got, uh, you got a new school building, right? That vacant lot right across the street, they're putting in a new school. And where, where they've got their driveway down there, there's going to be school buses coming out of there. I don't know how, uh, the, the schools, I think, first through, or kindergarten through fifth. So how much more traffic is that gonna be? Their exit driveway on Child's is right at the crest of a hill. Uh, that's gonna be a, a traffic hazard. As far as parking along there, yeah, it's wide enough, but you've, you've got so many cars and traffic coming through there. There's a hundred and seventeen homes in that addition. There's already ninety-six apartments, less than a half a block from the end of the, of their north. You've got two car lots on Chandler Road. One is just being built, one's been there. They're gonna have a minimum seventy-five cars a day for their stuff. All the homes in that area have a minimum of two cars per household. And I know some have three and four. I mean, and you ju- on, on a light day, you're talking five hundred and sixty cars. They use, they all use that road, basically. Or to get out on Chandler Road. Chandler Road gets you right on the interstate. You have to wait to get out on that road because there's no light there. There's a light for the ramps, but not for Chan- or, or not, not for Nebraska Drive on Chandler Road. Uh, you get people sitting there that are waiting for an invitation in the mail to turn sometimes, so it gets backed up pretty good. Now, you're, you're, you're putting, you're, you're increasing the traffic forty percent. You know, on a bad day, you have eight hundred cars at that intersection in the morning and eight hundred at night. It, it's way too much traffic for that. Especially with the new school, the new car lot. Uh, it, it, it's way too much traffic. Uh, there's no center lines on, on Nebraska Drive. People drive, tend to drive just a lot on whatever side they want. I've been there thirty-seven years, kinda seen it all. Uh, I mean, I, I'm all for progress. I'm all for building. I used to be in construction. But you're, you're sticking something in there that don't need to be there. It's way too much traffic. The people that live behind there, I know a lot of them, they're, 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 they're not gonna go for it. You don't want someone looking in your backyard because they live on the third floor. Well, we'll put trees in. Okay, it's gonna take twenty years for them trees to get tall enough to block anything. My understanding is there's no fence, there's no partition. Uh, there's just a lot of evasion of privacy. But like I said, my main concerns, and, and you won't put a, you won't approve a, a light on Nebraska Drive and Chandler because there's already one fifty feet up the, up the street for the interstate, for the ramps. And go, go down there when, when it's busy, try and, try and get in or even out. When you're coming from seventy-three, or, uh, uh, you guys changed everything up. Not the interstate, the railroad avenue there where you're trying to come up. You can't turn into the addition. Because you've got all the inter- all the traffic coming off the interstate. You've got people sitting there on Nebraska Drive trying to go left to get on the interstate. It, it, it's, it's gonna be a fiasco. I mean, there's already a few accidents there. There's gonna be a lot more. It's, it's, it's just, uh, too much. That's my opinion. I'll turn it over to somebody else.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak? And please sign in and state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Deborah Duff and I live at eleven oh seven Denver Street in Bellevue. And I am lot thirteen. My house, part of my yard is right in the e- in the easement. You can see on that, um, you can see, I'm, I'm right by the corner. The house is there, the, it, you go straight and then this way, um, it appears as though, um, because like I said, the easement, that's my house right there, right by the easement. I have a, a concern regarding no fence, um, with just bushes there. I mean, there are gonna be, uh, uh, kids in these apartments. There's gonna be people wanting to go cut cross through the area again and there's nothing to stop them. So that was, you know, I mean, that is one of my concerns. And, and also the traffic. Um, it's my understanding that it's basically a bust-in school, except for the division that we live in, but the, the, um, it's the, the main, people should be bussed in from across Fort Creek Road. You're gonna have the buses. The buses, I was at the meetings for the school, when the school being built. The buses are gonna be coming in Nebraska Drive. They're supposed to go in. Then when they go out, it's, it's my understanding, they're all supposed to go out down to Chan- you know, to Chandler. So again, as the gentleman before me said, there's a lot of traffic there as it is and you sit there forever trying to get through. And if there's no light or anything, how, how congested is that gonna be with people coming from the apartments and the normal traffic that's there? People have been coming off of the interstate and going through Nebraska Drive, not going through Fort Creek Road anymore. So that traffic has greatly increased in the past couple of years. Um, so, uh, also part of my concern comes from water runoff, all right? Um, as it is, there are times when i- it gets kind of, um, floody down at the bottom. And now all of the green and the dirt that slops up part of that water, where is it gonna go? I understand that there's some sort of a reservoir that's being built there, that's supposed to be there to help catch the water. But is the, has the drain, you know, has the sewer system and that drain storage down at the bottom been updated to handle all of those concerns for that additional runoff that's not gonna have ground to seep into? On my property in the past, um, this past season, between the spring and now, my, uh, front yard, or well, actually the side yard, there's a sewer there. And my land is sinking in. So I, you know, that's kind of concerns that I have is, is the ground, is the ground gonna hold, you know, how is it gonna hold stuff? So, um, you know, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak from the public on this issue?
Hi, I'm Amy Corview and I'm at twenty-seven eleven Columbus Drive. I did send in a letter last week. Um, let me get my address here. All right, so we are lot number twelve. And as you know, there's gonna be a lovely, um, parking lot right across our fence line. If you guys have access to my letter on page three, there's a view of my backyard looking from my deck. So if you look at this picture, that's a six-foot fence that's up right now. Um, no matter what you, what is done, whether it's trees that are gonna take forever to grow, we are always gonna see a parking lot and cars parked along Nebraska Drive. Um, they're also gonna raise the ground there, so even if we put a twelve-foot fence up, which we can't, we're still gonna see it. And they're gonna see us. We're gonna have parking lot lights in our backyard. Um, I, the other gentleman did address the traffic issues. And I do wanna address the intersection at Columbus Ave and Nebraska Drive. And that's on page five. That's image number five. Putting parking on Nebraska Drive, you can see in the picture, this is me pull, and then I'm pulled out farther than the stop sign. You put any cars there, people are not gonna be able to see turning right. You're gonna have school buses, you're gonna have parked cars, you're gonna have cars coming. And we're gonna basically have to play chicken to not get hit by another vehicle or hit a child or a pedestrian walking across the street. I also have concerns that there's not enough parking in the apartments and people are going to be parking in front of our house on Columbus Drive. And which is also gonna cause an issue because if you have people parking between our driveway on light twelve to Nebraska Drive, then you're gonna make Columbus Avenue a one-way street on top of buses and cars trying to turn left into a blind spot. It's, like the other gentleman said, it's just too much. You're trying to cram in too much into a very small area where it's not safe to drive. Child's Road is already dangerous. It's already hard to pull out on any of those streets, as I mentioned in my letter. Um, you're, you're already playing chicken up there because you have a blind spot right where they want to put an entrance to this apartment complex. I mean, how are people even gonna turn left out of the apartment complex without risking their lives? It, it, I just, I don't understand how. I don't understand why it can't just be kept zoned for residential. We wouldn't be having this issue if it was residential houses going up. Um, I think that's all I have to say. Oh, one more thing, the, the fence. Um, I don't think it's fair that the ten property owners that have lived here for many years are now gonna be responsible for, for putting up their own fences. You're talking about anywhere from eight thousand dollars to put a fence in just for security so you don't have people you don't know walking right into your backyard and into your, I mean, they can just walk right into your backyard at any times of the day. Plus, we're gonna have to install our Plus, we're going to have to install our own security. Plus, on top of that, even like I said before with the fence line, you know, we're going to have to install trees to block noise. Because we're going to have a parking lot right next to us, which means car doors at all hours of the day. Car horns, car radios blasting. People don't care when they don't own, they don't have respect for other people, we've already dealt with it with other renters in our neighborhood. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this issue? If you would please sign in and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Rhonda Juarez and I live at one zero zero seven Kawaii Drive. I believe I am lot nineteen. I did not receive the email notification or information, if there was an email or a flyer to be able to look at the Zoom meeting, so I missed out on all that. Many people that have already come up here to visit with you has already come across with many, many concerns that I would like to also share, but I'm going to kind of elaborate on top of that. My biggest concern is when we hear that the rent is going to be, I believe he said, eleven hundred dollars. Is that going to be for the one-bedroom? Or is that going to be for the multi-bedroom? If it is the minimum, then there's got to be a little bit higher rent required. If it's eleven hundred for the multi, what is the one-bedroom? Is it below the one, eleven hundred monthly rent? My understanding is after one year, we could be dealing with going into low-income housing. We already have that. It's around the corner. Low-income housing in that area is an issue. Couple of years ago, they tried to go in and make up for all the damages that were caused on those properties. And very shortly after the fact, it's going right back into the same direction that it had gone. So, looking at this whole plan, we keep hearing, yeah, that's a very small area to put such a large development on. Having it being three stories, that's a lot of people. We also have to take into consideration that down the street, we have Bellevue West. Many of the students, not only the traffic that has already been discussed, many of the students that attend Bellevue West cut through all that area. And that has not been brought to your attention yet, so that's just going to add on top of the commotion of traffic. In regard to where my home is located, and when we hear about the so-called, I forget the wording, but the elaboration of the trees that are going to be planted there, we have already heard, yes. I've already been there twenty-four years. It's going to probably take another twenty-four years for those trees to grow. My backyard is smack center-middle of this entire development. And I personally do not want a three-story building peering down into my backyard and my back of my house. And it has been brought to your attention about security reasons of, you know, us having to now get involved with purchasing security. Yeah, that's going to be a ginormous concern on my behalf. With all the individuals going in and out. And I have a fence, but I feel that I'm going to have to build another fence, a stronger fence, because I actually have a fence that has a gate that goes to that field back there. That opens up. So I guess, going back to probably the very first question that I really want answered is in regard to if this does go down to being approved, I want to know what's going to happen maybe after the first year with the rental cost. If it's going to go below that eleven hundred dollars, like what we have around the corner. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter? Anybody else?
My name is Jeremy Yost, live at eleven oh six Denver Street. My, my concerns are the same as everybody else's, the traffic. I don't believe that the sewers were built just the same, what these got, what you want to put there. There's a park across the street, right at the bottom of the hill. Everything comes to the bottom of the hill at Columbia Ave in Nebraska. They ripped out the park and they put nothing there, and there's been three inches to six inches of rain sitting in there for a couple of weeks now. And that, that issue hasn't been addressed. But, that being said, with everything running downhill to that point, it's a it's a nightmare. The sewer system hasn't been updated, that's been said. That's one of my main concerns, because what appears to me is everything's running to that point. You're turning backyards into septic tanks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward to speak on this matter?
Name's Scott Corview, two seven one one Columbus Ave. The only concern that I have, I, it's, was on the Zoom meeting with Apogee a couple of days ago, asked some question about taxes. Do our property taxes go up, do they go down? Do the home values go up or down when these are, when these are built? I don't know if anybody can answer that. Is there any data on that? They said they didn't have it. That's one of my concerns, is my property taxes and my home value after these are built. And like she said, after a year, when they don't fill up, and they start lowering the rent, what's going to move in? How many people are going to be leaving in a, in a single apartment? They said that they can, they said that they have people that will take care of that. But I don't believe that that will happen. Water runoff sewer, one and a half acres of concrete, you got to drain. It's a, I don't know, it's a lot of water and a lot of cubic foot. Trees, two-inch trees, ten-foot tall, those aren't going to grow for twenty years. My wife stated about the backyard looking in. I don't know if you guys want a parking lot in your backyard, but I don't. I don't want the lights, I don't want the cars, I don't want the noise. Houses are fine, apartment complex, no good. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter?
Can I make one more comment?
You may approach, yes. Please make sure you state your name and address again for the record.
Jim Campbell, twenty-eight oh three Columbus Ave. Hearing them talk about the drainage, like I said, I've been there thirty-seven years. The bottom of Columbus in Nebraska, it's, it's like a big toilet bowl when it rains hard. I mean, the water's up over your tires. Columbus Ave is washing out, they're replacing small slabs at a time. Denver, or not Denver, yeah, Denver is washing out, they're replacing small slabs at a time. The gentleman here on the corner, he didn't mention it, he just had Thrasher out there, his foundation sunk three inches. He lives on Flatland. It's flat where he lives. He just had to raise his foundation three inches. It's because of the water runoff. It's terrible. So now you're going to have all that parking lot. Where's it going to go? Downhill, right to the corner of Columbus and Nebraska Drive. And Jeremy mentioned the park over there, it's been underwater. Because I've been there thirty-seven years, I've seen a lot down there. It's just, you know, it happens all the time, you put concrete or asphalt down, water runs down to where it finds ground to sit or sink into. But they're, they're definitely right on the runoff, it's terrible in that area. And that corner is kind of where it all comes to.
I just wanted to elaborate on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, one more time, does anybody else want to speak on this matter from the public? Okay, if not, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Jobin, would you approach, please? Is there anything you would like to respond to?
Yes, madam chair members of the commission, I'll kind of address a lot of the concerns that I think I heard here today or tonight. You know, as far as traffic concerns, I'd say a number of things about that. Apartments generally don't have the high AM, PM, peak traffics. They generally disperse over the entire day and night, and they don't have, under traffic studies, do not have a high AM and PM peak traffic. It's also my understanding that Lampard Nielsen actually did a traffic study with OPS that's across the street. And in that traffic study, they determined that the road network, obviously in Nebraska Ave, was more than sufficient and was, as far as a design to take on the number of units that are being proposed here tonight. Remember, I talked about earlier, the maximum density that you could have here is two hundred and fifteen units on this particular site, and we only have a hundred and seven. You've got an over width Nebraska Ave, which has a paving width of forty-four feet. Obviously, it's a collector street that can take on the traffic here. The other kind of most important thing, I think, when you look at this particular property, is that the zoning decision was made many, many, many years ago. It's currently zoned RG eight and RG eight planned subdivision. So, that zoning decision, with respect to this property, has been made a long time ago. And what's being proposed here tonight is entirely consistent with that zoning decision. Really, the only reason why we're here on zoning tonight is to make sure that the, there's one base district zoning along the entire piece of property, because it currently is three lots. Again, tonight, we're combining them into one lot. So the idea is to make sure that you have one lot and one consistent zoning on that lot. So the, the zoning decision has already been made, we're well under the density that would be allowed under the R eight zoning. In fact, the planned subdivision actually adds site plan review and adds review by the planning staff to make sure that it's a quality project. As far as no fence, the developer believes that burming and landscaping is much more attractive than, than just putting a fence along the western boundary line of this particular development. We heard issues regarding stormwater detention. The stormwater detention area is right in this area here. And as you all know, that we're required to comply with all the post-construction stormwater management ordinances of the, actually the partnership, it's all the metropolitan cities are required to follow the post-construction stormwater management policies, which means that you can't have any net increase in the stormwater runoff off of your site between the pre-construction condition and the post-construction condition. So obviously, we have to comply with that. So you'll see that that detention basin in that corner is sized accordingly to handle all the stormwater. You know, I think we always get this on apartments projects, is that, you know, somehow that the owner of the apartment complex is going to let it get run down, but, but they have a significant investment in this particular project. I mean, they're investing fifteen and a half million dollars in this project. And again, being a Class A type apartment complex with respect to the material choices, et cetera. They have every interest in making sure that this property is well-maintained and that there's rules and regulations in place and that the tenants are vetted appropriately. And to make sure that you have a quality tenant as well and that their investment is protected. Again, the average monthly rental was eleven hundred per month. But that actually ranges between eight hundred and forty dollars a month on the low side for the efficiencies, up to fourteen hundred and sixty-five dollars a month on the three bedrooms. Well, fourteen hundred and sixty-five dollars a month on the three bedrooms is a lot, I think. This is not a low-income housing tax credit project, it's not an affordable housing tax or affordable housing project. It is market rate rents with conventional financing. It meets all the site regulators as far as the trees are concerned. The trees will have a minimum two-inch caliper and they'll range in height between twelve and fourteen feet from the beginning. So that is a good-sized tree as well. You know, we always hear also on all these apartment or multifamily housing projects that somehow, you know, that taxes are going to go down if this property is developed as a multifamily. But I would, I would say that I don't believe that's ever true. In fact, there's studies out there from a number of universities and planning, that have planned curriculum that believe that diversity of housing in these neighborhoods actually increase the market value, fair market value of the adjacent single-family homeowners. A lot of people want to stay in the neighborhood and they'll make the transition when they want. They don't want to maintain their houses anymore, they'll actually make that transition, they'll be able to stay in the neighborhood and yet live in an apartment that they don't have to maintain, that everything's maintained for them. So, again, we think this project is entirely consistent with the comp plan, consistent with the existing zoning, much less stents than it could be. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think it'll be a nice project. And the fact that this property hasn't developed for fifty years ought to tell you something that it is probably ripe for development now, and especially with the assistance of, assistance of the tax increment financing that was recommended for approval at the last agenda item. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll now close the public hearing and turn it over to the commissioners, commissioners, questions?
Question for staff. We had some questions coming up on the traffic and, again, where Nebraska Avenue connects with Child's Road. I think there were other concerns with where it comes out over on Chandler Road. Any discussion of stop signs, stoplights, anything for traffic modulators, again, knowing that the new school being built there?
Nothing that has been planned at this time, but obviously, our engineers are well aware of the traffic study that was recently done. They've also been out to the site a number of times and will continue to monitor those conditions as the school develops. And if this development were approved, as it develops as well.
And in terms of, some of the questions raised on parking on Nebraska Drive, is the parking that's planned there required in order to have enough parking available for a hundred and seven units? Or do they have enough onsite parking and that's just an additional?
So with the planned subdivision overlay, it does give staff discretion as far as that minimum parking requirement. I can tell you that I was fine with what they had onsite based on their mix of units, especially having studios. The parking along Nebraska Drive does help them. And again, that's something our city engineers were in favor of, was having that parking along Nebraska Drive.
I guess one of the other questions that came up, and I don't remember if it was addressed or not, on lighting. Again, with the apartments being taller than maybe the surrounding houses. I know obviously we've got requirements for the downlighting now, do you want to go into? I know, obviously, we've got requirements for the downlighting now, do you wanna go into maybe some of the planning on that for people?
Correct, so we do have some general language in the zoning ordinance, which states that the lighting does have to be downcast, and that there cannot be light spillage onto the single-family residential neighborhood that is adjacent. That's something that is looked at, um, by planning and our electrical inspectors at such time the permit is submitted for the, the development. I would also add that nowadays, most with the technological advances, lights have come a long ways. So it isn't necessarily the lights of the old days where it was a broader spectrum of lighting. Uh, most lighting now is the downcast and is what is required.
I have a question for Mr. Jobin, you please. Can you give us, uh, the name of another, uh, project or complex that this company ha- is currently managing or has developed?
Yes, I have a list over here, but you know.
It may be helpful to see if, if someone has observed.
No, I, I think, I think it's a good question, because, um, they actually do a very, very nice project, they're, uh, they have one called Latitude Forty-One. This one is actually in Bellevue, there's one called Revello at a Hundred and Ninety-Second and Pacific, and there's Onyx at Exarben, uh, which is also in Exarben Village. I, I have, uh, two of the pictures are, um, interiors and one is exterior, but I can tell you, I'm familiar with the one at a Hundred and Ninety-Second and Pacific, and it's extremely nice, uh, but here.
The commissioners may recognize, um, the Latitude Forty-Two project as the Wolf Creek Apartments, um, south of Walmart.
So that's three examples of, uh, what this developer has done in the Omaha metropolitan area, and two in Bellevue, or one, one in Bellevue, two in Omaha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While the applicant's still standing, could you once again explain, pull that back off? The t- topography of that, uh, the entire property, is it, uh, everything being equal, does it run south to north, uh, as far as?
My understanding, it runs, it's relatively flat in this particular area here, and then I believe there's about a seven percent grade.
I don't know if anybody else can see it, I don't see anything.
Oh, you, I'm sorry, uh, yeah, there you go, there you go. There's about a seven percent grade that goes down to the north from, um, about the, the end of the clubhouse area. So it drops pretty significantly, yes, there. And so, the stormwater will run that way, obviously, and then will be detained in that detention basin in the, uh, southwest corner.
I, I also, uh.
Put that way, maybe you can see.
There you go, I can see that.
Yeah, you can see that. So from he- about here to here, it falls.
So I, I believe that Corbo's had some very, uh, in their letters, some, uh, very important things, and you've addressed many of those, we appreciate that. We understand we're not here, the, these apartments can be built, uh, to some degree, as, as they are right now. But I, I can put myself in their shoes, being at the corner of Columbus and, um, well, right behind the parking lot. So essentially, they're gonna have, looks like maybe forty parking spots, the, about the width of this room behind their house.
Are you talking about here?
Yes.
Yeah, well, in that particular area, it's not thirty-foot buffer, it's actually sixty-feet buffer. So it's all landscaping and green space, so, I mean, sixty feet is, is quite a distance away. Uh, again, you know, it's always been zoned for multifamily, and the maximum density is two hundred and fifteen units, and we're at a hundred and seven. So it's a pretty big difference between what you could build versus what's being built. So I, I think care was taken in making sure that they're, they were not trying to maximize or, or, or blow the site out of the water here as far as the development. So, there's a lot of area within this four and a half acres that is not actually being developed with structures.
And, and I certainly understand that, I guess I'm, and just to be blunt, in the interest of being a good neighbor, I would be concerned too to have forty or whatever, however many parking spots that is right by my house, sixty feet behind my house, uh, with people coming and going at all times of the, of the night potentially. It's one thing to have a house next to you where you have maybe two or maximum four cars, but now you're, you're talking a lot of cars, obviously, they're not all coming and going at the same time. So in the interest of being a good neighbor, is there anything that you could do to, to mitigate that issue of possible noise?
I'm, I'm sure we'd be happy to look into that, what we can do, and, and if it's, I, you know, there's a number of trees that are shown, I think, I don't know if you can see them that clearly, but there's a number of trees here on the other side of the detention basin. So you have the trees on the other side, then you have the detention basin, then you have the parking itself, and there is no access here, uh, on Columbus Avenue. So the only access is, is getting cars off here on, on Nebraska Avenue and then, uh, Child's Road. So, uh, you're not gonna have a lot of cars, well, you're not gonna have any cars coming in from the north side of the, the project. It's all gonna be coming in from either this location or this location here. And, and we, I, I believe sixty feet's a, a pretty good distance of green space and landscaping, uh, to, to buffer that parking area. But we're happy to look at other ideas, if there are any, uh, you know, if it's burming or whatever it is, to block and shield any lights that, you know, that might glare on the adjacent property owner, so we'll look at that.
Okay, I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate that. And one final question, this may be a staff question, is, uh, who, who makes the decision how far the cars are able to park on the west side of Nebraska, at the intersection of Nebraska and Columbus? Is that a city engineering decision?
Yes, that was something that was looked at by our, uh, two engineering staff in the Public Works Department. Um, they worked with the developer's engineer to come up with, um, the spacing and what they were comfortable with.
Thank you.
Mr. Jobin, if I could call you back up here for a couple of questions?
Yes.
As far as parking lot lighting, um, especially on that end, um, what would be the, the height, like the tallest height of the lighting structures, poles?
Do you wanna come up to the podium?
Yeah, I'll, I'll turn it over to Reagan Pence of Lampard Nielsen, but I, I would tell you that not only do the buildings have to have the downcast lighting, but do, so do the parking lot, uh, lights, and everything has to be downcast, and there has to be, I don't know, I can't remember what your ordinance is, but is it zero vertical and horizontal foot candles at the property line between the, the different zoning classifications? So it essentially is a zero cutoff, meaning you can't have any spillage or glare, either vertically or horizontally, uh, between properties. So, as Tammy said in earlier, I mean, the lighting has come light-years ahead of where it used to be, uh, back in the day. So, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Reagan.
Okay. If you could sign in and state your name and?
Reagan Pence, Lampard Nielsen, one four seven one zero, West Side Road, Omaha. So I am not a electrical or lighting engineer, but, uh, these will not be the high-mass lights like you would see on a, a street or down the freeway. Uh, these are gonna be typically twelve to the fourteen-foot height, and they'll be, uh, LED fixtures.
And then I don't know if you can answer this question, or Mr. Jobin, but the on-street parking on Nebraska, how far from the corner of Columbus Avenue does the first space start if you're headed south? Towards Child's?
Speaking right there?
Yes.
That looks like, excuse me, approximately a car, about twenty to twenty-five foot is what I would say.
From the corner?
From the corner, and in addition to, um, we are making modifications there, um, we are adding bump outs for pedestrians, kind of a pedestrian refuge. So you aren't just walking out into the street, you actually have an opportunity to, um, kinda look out and see what's coming.
Thank you. I do have a question for staff.
Can I ask him before he sits down?
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
Now that I got an engineer, not an attorney, I'll ask some, I'll ask some engineering questions. Just, I wanna make sure Mrs. Corview's concerns are addressed, these are mostly engineering things. So she talks about existing sewer handling a hundred and four new homes. I assume you and working with the city engineers, you guys have confirmed that the sewer is good to go, make sure her concern is?
Correct, uh, we've done drainage studies, we've worked with their engineering staff, and, um, yeah, so far, uh, the numbers of the math works.
Both for storm and, and Santeran?
Correct, and for the storm two-ten and a hundred year, um, you know, we are gonna capture what's on that site. So if there's currently water falling on this site that's making its way to the park, our job is to make sure that doesn't happen with the new development.
Perfect, um, Tammy, do you have the site plan, Mrs. Corview, turn in, is that something you can show, put up there? I think it's important to look at this, because this is the first one I've seen where we actually have the school site plan across from the, uh, development. And so some engineering questions here, I know, you know, the commissioners, we had a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion with OPS about student traffic or student flow, kids coming in and out of that school. And I don't have a pointer, so I don't know how I'm gonna explain this, but if you guys remember, there was no kids, there was no sidewalk along Child's, and there's no sidewalk connectivity to the school along Nebraska. They're gonna force all the kids north of their entrance. Is that, is that, is that what I believe we all looked at that day, when we, there's no city sidewalks along there. We were, their, their goal was to push all the kids to the north away from the traffic. And so, the one concern I have with this is, and I'm gonna have to stand up, I don't know if you can hear me, but my concern is, with this development, we're, we're forcing all the people to walk to this corner, but we're trying to dump all the kids to the street right here. I don't know how many kids are gonna walk all the way around to get to home, as opposed to coming in here and trying to jump across the street. And so I guess from an engineering perspective, by adding that on-street parking there, have we thought about, has the city engineers thought about what we're gonna do with dumping, you know, a few, a few hundred kids or however many kids who are gonna be going across the apartment complex? I don't, I don't envision them walking all the way down around to the corner and back around, seems like a long ways to go. And I know, we had a lot of conversation during the OPS hearing about student safety and crossing railroad tracks, and they're gonna take the shortest, and Mr. Casey, you talked about, they're gonna take the shortest path to get to where they need to go, and so, just talk to me about that a little bit, if you would.
Sure, and so you were, you're thinking there's gonna be a mid-block crossing from the school to the multifamily? And, um, as, would the solution be adding a walkway on the east side of Nebraska, is that?
I'm just asking, I just, it seems like the school's only responsible, I believe, to put the sidewalk to the city park? And then you have a gap, which is the city, city's property, right, to get to where your guys' crossing comes on this development? Seems like we're going, we're going several hundred feet to the north, coming across the street, coming several hundred feet back to the south to get to the apartments. I'm just asking, would it make sense engineering-wise to maybe put the bump outs that you talked about, the pedestrian safety zones, right across from that? And actually encourage the kids to cross there as opposed to going to the corner?
You know, that, that's something we could work with, uh, planning staff to, to review and, and see what could happen there. Um, a mid-block crossing, I know, um, there are some, uh, from a traffic's perspective, uh, best practices in the spacing between an intersection and a mid-block crossing, and encouraging or not encouraging those uses, and I think we're absolutely, you know, we would look into that.
Mr. Arnie, so the city owns this property here that the park is on. So that gap in sidewalk that you talked about is actually the responsibility of the city, and that has been looked at, that has been discussed. It was, um, our Public Works Department that wanted that crosswalk at, um, Columbus and Nebraska Drive. The intent is to get kids across safely and also have that connectivity. So that is something that has been looked at by the Public Works Department.
Did they, did they have the site plan that you just had pulled up during that conversation? I just, it's the first time I've seen, you know, when you look at the GIS, it's just blank plots.
And I don't know that that site plan is correct with the most, um, updated information, but yes, um, that is something that the engineers have looked at. And like I said, there will be that sidewalk connectivity, because the city is responsible for this property here that I'm highlighting, because that's, that's all park property. So, yes, there is, there will be a gap in sidewalk, you can see where the sidewalk is, ends now, so there's quite a gap along there. That is something the city will need to correct in order to have the connectivity down to the school and connect with the sidewalk that they're required to put in.
We don't have a plan, obviously, for that, I mean, if that doesn't go in there, obviously, the shortcut is a shortcut, 'cause there's no sidewalk, so is there a way to?
The city will put that in, because again, the city's responsible, it's the city land, the, the city engineers are the ones that requested that crosswalk, so, they didn't do that without planning what would need to be done on the city's property in order to facilitate that, that, that walkway.
Yeah, we just encourage a conversation about the mid-block crossing, I just think, i- if this, if this site plan is accurate, I think you're asking those kids to go a long ways to get home.
We, we absolutely have the conversation, I, um, I also know that there's a, you know, again, from the traffic perspective, to encourage a mid-block crossing, that there can be challenges with that also.
Sure, thank you very much.
If I might add, our city engineers, I can tell you, would be opposed to a mid-block crossing, um, for that reason, because it's not a best engineering practice. So, 'cause that's something that has been discussed, um, you know, they would prefer to have the crosswalk where it's shown, and then have the sidewalk connectivity to the school.
On the sidewalk question, Tammy, what's planned on the south where it connects up with Child's Road? Again, this'll be our first opportunity, as we talked about with the school plan that came in, as Mr. Arnie mentioned, there's just a whole lot of lack of sidewalk anywhere along there. What are the requirements for this development, are they gonna have sidewalks, basically?
Yes, so, let me get that site plan back up. It's shown on their site plan, if you can see it, it's shown, uh, along that south side, so they are required to have sidewalks.
And again, if I remember right, on the school's plan, they were gonna have a set of staircases on what would be their southwest corner, kinda leading down into their school campus, if I remember right?
That's correct.
Question for staff. You said the city engineers were in favor of on-street parking, why was that?
Because as Mr. Jobin pointed out, that city's wide enough to allow for it, that was probably always what was supposed to happen when development in that area occurred. So, the width of the pavement, the width of the right-of-way accommodates that on-street parking.
Question, Tammy, I know I'm thinking of other apartment developments that have gone in next to neighborhoods, the one that comes to mind, just north of Aldi's, I think it's Green Meadows to the north of that, yeah. Did we have any fencing requirements, burming requirements, what did we do there when we separated apartment buildings?
We do not, we have landscaping requirements, um, there can be burming requirements as well, um, that's one of the options that the zoning ordinance identifies, um, depending on the height of the building and the width of the buffer yard required. So yes, burming is a, is a tool that a developer can use, we don't have a fencing requirement for apartments. So, um, I believe it's Highland Meadows, that's north of the one that you're talking about, that about's Green Meadows, there's no fencing requirement there. Um, I've been with the city for sixteen years, to my knowledge, we haven't had a fencing requirement for multifamily residential.
And I think a more recent apartment addition down by the movie theater, it seems like we've gotten more of the apartments right next to the housing.
Correct.
On that, uh, west side of the development, again, burming, fencing, landscaping.
Yeah, I, I can't recall fencing being utilized, um, in any apartment developments that we've had. Again, the landscaping and the burming, most definitely, that's the tool that, those are the tools that the zoning ordinance allows for.
Several of the homeowners have brought up the water runoff issue down that pulls Columbus and Nebraska. What is the city doing right now related to that, or is there anything in, in the works or there?
That I can't answer, I'm not sure what Public Works or Engineering has in the pipeline, as Mr. Pence pointed out, with this project, they have to capture that. Um, that's gonna be a requirement, it's probably beneficial that this development is happening now and didn't happen forty years ago, because twenty, thirty years ago, we didn't have any of those regulations that we have now. Mr. Jobin alluded to those, as did Mr. Pence, and there are actually quite stringent watershed partnership regulations that have to be met with these types of developments.
Commissioners, your wishes?
Just one, one, uh, additional question if I could ask.
Just one, one additional question if I could ask applicant. As, is this a, is it a standard procedure to have a manager of the apartment living on premises?
No, my understanding is they're not for this one, I mean, that might be the case where you have a larger multifamily housing project, but this has been a hundred and seven units. They do have a leasing office that's in the, the building, that's, that houses the clubhouse area. But, but otherwise, no, not anyone that actually lives on the premises.
Thank you.
There's no more comments, I'll make a motion.
Any more comments, commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve based on cap, capability, compatibility with this surrounding neighborhood, lack of perceived negative impact in conformance of the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Arnie and a second by Commissioner Perrin. Please vote.
Okay, Ms. Van Horn, my voting just popped up here, but my mouse is once again. Gone, I think this falls asleep in between, there we go.
All voted yes, motion carried.
Okay, the motion has been approved, this is a recommendation that goes to the city council and it will go. To the city council for a public hearing on October twentieth.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out for this this evening, again, encourage you to. Follow through with the city council as well if you have additional questions or concerns.
Okay, our next public hearing is a request to rezone lots one, two, excuse me, two and two A Kennedy Town Center replat seven. Being a replat of lot two Kennedy Town Center replat four. From RG dash twenty PS to BG PCO and RG twenty PS for the purpose. Of a commercial and multifamily residential development and small subdivision plat. Lots two and two A Kennedy Town Center replat seven, applicant Carlson Consulting Engineers Incorporated. General location Twenty-Fifth Street and West Chandler Road. Case number Z two thousand eight dash ten and S two thousand eight dash eighteen. Is the applicant here? Would you please come forward? Sign in and state your name. And address, please, for the record.
I've run out of room to sign this thing, can you flip it over?
Sure.
Yeah, if it's full, please.
My name is Mike Dedman, I'm with Carlson Consulting Engineers at seven zero six eight Ledstone Commons in Bartlett, Tennessee. And basically, I'm here to discuss any design or engineering questions you might have. Ryan Durant with R and D Group, he's our real estate representative and. He'll be here to answer any business questions or real estate questions you might have.
Well, I'm not sure if it's you or Mr. Durant, but would one of you explain a little bit about your request?
Presently, the lot, lot two of Kennedy Town Center. Is a zoned RG twenty PS. And we are requesting rezoning. The north portion of that lot, currently the lot is about eight point six acres. The rezoning area is the two point five four acres on the north part. Basically, the new Casey's that went in just east of there. If you projected their, their south property line across to Twenty-Fifth. That's the area of rezoning that we're requesting. We're requesting that to be rezoned to BG PCO for a future commercial development. The corridor between Twenty-Fifth and I seventy-five is trending commercial development along Twenty-Fifth. So we feel like it fits with the neighborhood, there's a dot, a Family Dollar across the street from us. Casey just went into the east of us, there's commercial development going in behind Family Dollar. There's two car dealerships further east. So we don't feel like we're asking for something that's, that doesn't fit with the neighborhood. As far as the remaining parcel. We would maintain the current zoning, that zoning is geared for multifamily. And we're proposing a. A forty-eight unit apartment complex there. Certainly, we could make it more dense than it is, we, we've got them spread out pretty good. We could probably get twice as many units on there, but we wanted to keep things kind of spread out, have an open area. In the middle for, for people to use for playground, barbecue area. And we, that's, that's really what that part of the land was, was planned for in your. Land use map, so in that regard, we're not really asking for anything special.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this matter? And just as a reminder. We have a five-minute limit and just be respectful of each other, as you would want your, your time respected when you are up here.
I don't, I don't hear too good, so I didn't hear a word you said, but I'll only be about five minutes.
Okay, fair enough.
I got bad ears. Larry Casio, eighty oh nine, South Twenty-Fifth Street, I live about a short half a block south of this proposed site. And I, I really enjoyed when they put in the senior living center. And right next to it, they want to put these apartments in that are government funding and I, I don't know much about their funding. But I don't know if it's gonna be projects, any kind of government, government funding is not a good mix next to senior citizens. Now, it's right next west of there. And if it's not a good fix, it's not a good mix. Far as I'm concerned, if my mother lived there, she wouldn't be living there long if they put this property in. And I want you all to think about your family, if you would want to put yours in there with this property going next. And the gas station, these people to go to the gas station are gonna go to Twenty-third Street North on a private road. And go around the property. Senior citizen property, that's Rose Altura, that's the way they're gonna go, kids are gonna be walking through there. The people in the cars are gonna go through there, it's not a good site. And I don't know if you've been there really looking at this site because it shouldn't, I don't think it should have got this far. And the entrance on Albert is unacceptable, it's in a residential area. With a lot of homes, with substandard streets. You can only park on one side and you can only get one other car through there. And everybody that's gonna go to. Cornhusker is gonna cut through Twenty-third or Twenty-fourth, probably Twenty-third. And hit, hit, hit Twenty-Fifth and go to Cornhusker and come back that way. If they're coming west on Chandler, they're gonna do the same thing, they're gonna come to Solder and go through this property. This property is, is not large enough to handle the load. And plus. In the morning and night, all the kids are gonna be coming through the school. And it's unacceptable for me to think that. The planning department would let them get by with this. The best suit, if this would ever pass. Chandler Street would be the only exit and they won't give it to them, but they did give it to the gas station. I was surprised the gas station got it. A lot of these people who got homes around the gas station now, people, trucks are coming through there and tearing their property up, it's gonna get worse. Let's see, I got one other item. We know the traffic on Twenty-Fifth's gonna increase because they're gonna hit Cornhusker, a lot of these cars. And they're only gonna go to Twenty-third or Twenty-fourth, that's the only way they're gonna go. And these streets are curved, they're not straight streets, they're curved, and they're substandard streets. The people that put the, the streets in. I had a heck of a time with them because they did a lot of things that they shouldn't have did. And let's see, I got one other thing here. That's about it, I just, I just, I just don't think it's a good mix to have senior citizens next to a subsidized apartment place. With the entrance and exit on one way, coming out the same way on Albert Street. And it's right next to the houses. So, so I just don't think that it's a, it's a good choice and if I was still on the council, I'd vote to deny it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Casio. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter from the public?
Hi, my name is Janice Stover, I'm at seventy-eight ten South Twenty-Fourth Street. Right across from the grade school. And I just want to address, we have obviously numerous residents that are very concerned about this development. We moved into this development, my mom and I did. For, actually for peace and quiet, let me tell you, we came from midtown in Omaha, peace and quiet was welcome. But we have seen development. And I don't really appreciate it because we have the new development of Corwin. Which has become a speedway for test drives and employees. They don't exit through the, the exits and entrances that have been provided for them. It's all along Solder, all along Albert and everything in between. So we felt a little burned on that development, along with the lighting, so then in comes Casey's. And I will tell you, I thanked your code enforcement person that was out there, taking pictures. Of landscaping that had to be mowed, that was at least two feet high. So that's not being maintained either, so when we look for something else to come in. Please understand our apprehension. I want, I just want to ask developers. If this is something, if you can go home tonight or you can go to your house tonight and look around your neighborhood and say. This is something I want in my neighborhood, let us know. Because we're not all well-versed on all of this, this is new to us. So we're looking for something that complements the neighborhood, so. With that, I have, there's other residents that would like to speak. I just want to make it known that we're kind of feeling a little gun-shy because we've been burned on a couple of developments already. So that's probably where some of this is coming from, as well as property damage that occurred during the two previous developments. Trucks coming in and out where they shouldn't have been, tight corners they couldn't make, so they're up over somebody's yard, so. You know, please just listen to them and take it all into consideration. And we're not against development, it's just the right development. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Linda Vermutten, I'm at seven nine oh four South Twenty-second Avenue.
Could you sign in, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
It'll just take me a while, so.
That's fine.
So in Kennedy Ridge, we have fifty-four homes. I moved in there also, like the previous speaker, with my mom and it was very quiet. We had no crime and it was good. And then Toyota came in, I came to that hearing and they were supposed to have trees completely along the line. Well, if you come there and look, there's a tree over here, a big gap, a tree over there and. Their trees are maybe a little bit taller than I am, so it does nothing for the light issue. The big problem we have is our mailboxes are out on Sutter Road. As you can see, I'm on a walker, we have a couple other neighbors that are on walkers, electric. Motor scooters and one person down the end of my road is completely blind and myself and another person are visually impaired. We have to cross Sutter Road. And since the, the gas station and Toyota have been put in there. The traffic is way in excess of twenty-five miles an hour coming up and down that road and now you want. To put this other development in, that's like the, Mr. Casio said, they're gonna cut down Twenty-third. And Twenty-fourth Street, which is what people are doing already when they are test driving those cars. Since the gas station has gone in, in this past month, we've had three break-ins into vehicles in our neighborhood, which we'd never had before. And in one case, they accessed the remote and broke into the garage and stole some stuff. And we've noticed a drastic increase in foot traffic coming through the neighborhood since that gas station has gone in and now. You want to propose to put in this multi. Dwelling place right there and that's a great concern, A, the extra traffic, our streets are congested as it is, we have major. Issues with snow, when the snow is removed, it's pushed right up against those mailboxes, so we basically. Unless one of us on the board goes and digs it out, we can't even access the mailboxes. And we have the senior center, some of their snow is also getting pushed down street and now we're going to have a multi-level place that's accessing Albert Street. And so there's a lot of concern from the residents, I'm the vice president on the board and several had expressed concern about this. Additional development there, now it says on the plan that there's supposed to be. A retaining wall, so we don't know how high that retaining wall is gonna be. And how that's going to impact water runoff, we do have some issues in our neighborhood with water runoff on some of the properties. Because the roads are too, the housing, the ground is too flat. And so that's impacted their basements, et cetera. So just with the extra traffic through there, as the former person had spoken, when they were building. That gas station, they were cutting through even on Twenty-second Avenue with those huge big trucks all the time. And they were not doing twenty miles an hour. And so that's a great concern, along with that retirement center that Mr. Casio spoke about, the, those apartments. The fifty-four homes are predominantly, I think there's only one resident that is under fifty-five. So the rest of us are all over fifty-five in that, and now we're going to have. Multi-homes with other people that are wanting to cut through that neighborhood and are not going to honor the speed. We have spoken to the sergeant that does traffic flow, he's been out a few times to talk to both of the car dealerships because they. Toyota's the main one that cuts through there and now, this is a big concern on the safety, the traffic. The damage to the value of the properties. Because it's a housing environment and we feel it's little by little being enclosed with businesses. And that's a concern and also with the apartments. I think those are the main, the main concerns, we have a couple of residents that are contemplating selling their property because of the noise from Toyota. Because they'll come down Twenty-second Street and they don't stop at that stop sign, they go flying up. Sutter Road at, at least thirty-five miles an hour to the top there. So that is a, a great concern, like Mr. Casio said, those streets are really too narrow, it's substandard and now you want to funnel all this additional traffic in. Through Albert Street, so we're really concerned about that, thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in and state your name and address for the record. Please sign in and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, uh, my name is, uh, Dan Doobie, Daniel Doobie, at seven-eight-zero-three, South Twenty-Fourth Street. And, uh, Madam Chairman, I, I wanna let you know that we had, um, uh, a lot of our residents show up here out of concern. Uh, but with our two hours attrition since the seven o'clock start, we lost a lot of people, but I think that your staff could attest to the fact that we had enough people out there that we could have exceeded the capacity of this room. Um, I wanted to call attention to the corner of Albert and Twenty-Fourth Street, um, which is closest there. Um, on that inside corner, that's where I live. My, uh, my wife and I, we, we both have sleep disorders. Um, and with the, the nearby noise of, uh, forty-eight new households and a parking lot that will have, uh, car headlights that are gonna be shining in our bedroom window, I'd have to build a, a solid fence for privacy and sleep. But the problem is, because of that gradual curve, um, local code won't allow the, uh, uh, erection of any, uh, sight obstruction on the inside corner of that curve, uh, due to safety considerations, so, um, I request that the building plan include a solid fence on the outside of that curve, uh, on, uh, Twenty-Fourth and Albert, and ideally, you know, an opaque fence that, that matches the style of our, our neighborhood. Um, I'd like to also go on record, um, as, uh, opposing the, the proposed multifamily residences for, for reasons that the other people raised, and particularly for the senior citizens that are immediately adjacent. Uh, even our neighborhood was founded as a fifty-five-plus community, and, uh, we, we probably still have seventy percent of the people that are, um, fifty-five plus. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take this down. My name is Debbie Young. I live at seventy-eight-oh-one, South Twenty-third Street, on the corner of Twenty-third and Albert, which is catty-corner to the development to the east. We lived through the construction of Casey's on Twenty-second and Chandler, which was a total nightmare. The dump trucks, concrete trucks, and all the heavy machinery was channeled to Albert Street to access the job site, which was about two blocks away. The trucks would jump the curb in the empty lot and rumble down the site that we're talking about today to get down to the job site. During this time, we encountered truck activity on Albert Street before seven o'clock in the morning, creating rumbling of our house from the heavy vehicles, loud engine noises, and increased traffic. The trucks would frequently engine brake going down the street. Then this truck started to access Albert Street through the parking lot of Walnut Creek, and they were not able to make the turn onto Albert Street without rolling up on our property and damaging our sprinkler heads and lawn. When we tried to bring this to the attention of Casey's and the trucking companies, whose name was on the side of the trucks, our complaints fell on deaf ears. The activity obviously continued. Concrete trucks would wash out their trucks in the street after they dumped their loads. Side dump trucks would track mud all the way down Albert Street, leaving it a total mess. And Casey's Construction Company, Casey's Construction Company only started cleaning the street when they were about ninety percent done with the project. Albert Street was, was not designed to carry this type of construction equipment. The streets are gonna start deteriorating quickly if we continue to use Albert Street for the construction of this project. Um, I'd like to know what measures will be taken so that we don't have to be concerned about damage to our prod, to our property, and all the construction trucks and debris's clogging up the streets. And with a project of this size, what measures are gonna be taken to cut down on the dust that is generated during construction? Our area, along with Walnut Creek, has an elderly populat, population that have several health issues, which may be affected by the dust and dirt. Not to mention the additional maintenance costs associated with our keep, with keeping our properties and air conditioning units clean. I'd also like to voice my opposition to the entrance and exit com, of the complex onto Albert Street. With that many residents in such a small area, it will certainly double the amount of traffic in the area. We already have an issue with vehicles speeding up and down Albert Street from the local residents, and then the traffic trying to avoid the streetlight at Twenty-Fifth and Chandler, and the additional traffic from the Toyota dealership. I'd also like to make sure that whatever steps they take to do their snow removal at this facility, that they're not throwing the snow out onto Albert Street. We, being right across the street from Walnut Creek, get the snow pushed onto our property, onto our sidewalks, creating hazardous situations that they're not cleaning up, and we're responsible to remove that snow. There are other people that will be living right across the street from that development will have the same problem. And lastly, I'd like to, to mention that I think there are just way too many trees on that development. It's about twice the amount of trees that are on Walnut Creek, and I bet your caretakers of that facility aren't gonna come and clean the leaves out of my yard when the northwest wind blows them onto my property. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kay Kebert Hensley, I reside at seventy-eight-oh-five, South Twenty-Fourth Street, next to Dan. I can't do anything but say yes to what everybody said. One of my biggest concerns is that corner off of Twenty-Fourth to Albert is barely one lane in the winter, because the snow is packed so high. Also, I have called several times about illegal parking. Code's enforcement says that they come out, it's not taken care of. So that only bothers me, too, what's going to go on in that apartment complex? If we call, it's not taken care of. We have just become Bellevue. We paid our taxes, and we paid extra because we were a Sid. I'd like to know who our council member is for that area. Who is our councilman for our area? Can anybody answer that?
Should be Ward Four, I believe, Kathy Welch.
Okay.
Uh, Kathy Welch, Ward Four.
Okay, just so we know when voting comes in. My concern is, we don't need, we don't have, I work, so I go out early in the morning to go to school. When I pull out, I have to risk backing out of my driveway because I've got the flying traffic coming through for the car dealership. As I go around that corner, I go down. To get out, down by Casey's, there's got to be a traffic light sooner or later. People are turning in, people are turning out, you have all these trucks going up through the elderly folks' home, and now you're gonna make an access through there also? To come out onto, from that apartment, onto Albert Street, off of that curve, it's a blind spot. With the Doobie's house next to me, you can't see what's coming or going at times. There's no vision. The other access is through Walnut Creek. Those people walk around, we walk around. Are we gonna be able to right now? You have to risk your life at times to take a walk, especially to go get your mail. Because people are flying through there with no, they put up the speed zones, they did nothing about it. I guarantee people were speeding through there, and we haven't seen anything. We call, we're concerned, we don't see anybody. Because we've become Bellevue, now you want the property? When we were Bellevue, when we weren't Bellevue, nobody wanted that property. Nobody mowed it, nobody took care of it, and nobody cared about it. But now that we've become Bellevue, everybody wants the property and wants to build on it. The low-income housing, I teach where there's low-income housing. You can have good residents, but I can tell you, the majority do not take care of rental properties. They don't take the pride like we do. We have an association, our lawns are mowed, our grass is taken care of, our snow is done. But now we have to worry about them not taking care of it? I'd like to see some of the properties that this company has also built, so we can see what it looks like and know where they are, so we can see, one or two years after, what those properties look like. Because usually they have sheets hanging from the window, they have stuff hanging off the banisters, and it's terrible. And we don't need that, we don't need a bunch of dogs, I don't need dog crap in my yard, because I don't have a dog. We have an ordinance where you pick it up when your dog goes to the bathroom. I don't need people walking through there, leaving their animals. That's not fair to me, who is a homeowner, who pays association fees, and who pays a nice house payment because I have a nice property. I don't need it to be downgraded, and I don't need it to lose value. And that is what happens when you build subsidized housing in a nice housing district. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter?
I'm Barb Lemoine, I live at seventy-eight-oh-three, South Twenty-third Street. I'm president of the HOA at this time. I'm kind of stuck. I want to talk about a personal homeowner, but also representative as the HOA. So I adhere, and I am hearing everybody's concerns, and I support those. Um, where I live is next to the Youngs, and so, I don't have the impact with tra, I hear the sounds, I hear things, but I'm right with them on the traffic flow going down Albert. I'm on Third, Twenty-third Street, traffic goes right now, people from, um, the apartments that are there now, they come right down Twenty-third, they come right down Albert, that's how they get there. They don't, you know, so they go all the way around, so adding more apartments coming down in there, especially with the entrance is proposed, just to the parallel of that entrance parking area, right off of Twenty-third Street, that is gonna be one big cluster of traffic. I, I, be, I mean, the drives are gonna be just feet apart. I mean, it's just, plus that Twenty-third on there with, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be nasty. So, um, I just hope, safety, you know, is my primor, primarily concern for the HOA, for all the members and all that, and, um, I guess part of that is, in the original diagram, in, um, it did show a, uh, retaining wall, but subsequent discussions, it doesn't look like that's possible, or that's gonna be there. But in the, in the original plat, it says a retaining wall along Twenty-Fifth Street. Um, that would be great, didn't know if that would go all the way around the development or not. Um, or, or if there's gonna be a fence. Because if there's no fencing, and like Debbie Young said about the landscaping, if those are just trees, or if there's bushes, bushes to me is an unsafe option. People can hide behind those, and, you know, i- it's just scary. It's just scary, scary, scary for me, for people. And, and as Linda would say, the possible vandalism and all that just increases when you have more of things like that. It may be cosmetic pretty, but it's just very concerning regarding safety to me. Safe, safe, safe. So I look at it from a safety perspective for our HOA. How do we protect our citizens? Do we try to protect them and put a wall, uh, put a fence around our whole development, which is gonna be a cost astronomical? And hearing that, really, that's gonna be probably null and void. After hearing what Dan said, planning, oops, excuse me, that they won't, you, wanna pl, won't put, be able to put a wall around that curve because it'll block sight. Okay, so how, how else do we, as homeowners, protect ourselves from additional traffic, let alone, um, just safety for adding more, um, bodies and things into that corner of the development? I was not against it at all, um, before, I'm going, that, we knew development was gonna happen in that corner. Just didn't know what, when, and all what's gonna be in there. Maybe if you got rid of the commercial at the top side, commercial zone, and moved the apartments up so that it's all apartment near Chandler, and got rid of the commercial zone, I don't know, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there. But anyway, so, um, just wanted to relay the concerns of everybody as well within the HOA, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak at the hearing, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? The public hearing is still open, you may speak again.
I'm Linda Vermutten. My concern is that, um, we were a Sid, and we were annexed to Bellevue. We were promised a lot of things that this is gonna be amazing since we've been annexed, and we really have not seen anything. Thank you. Um, of benefit, really, apart from the, the grass finally getting mowed that was on this lot that was way high, and we had to call and call and call to get that taken care of. That's the only good thing, the snow has not, um, the snow has been a problem. Um, you ask us as individual property owners, we were annexed primarily because of the dollars that it would bring to the city. But the benefits to individual property owner, when you put more development in there, is you ask us to trust you. I went to the hearing with that Toyota dealership, there was never supposed to be an entrance onto Twenty-second Street off that dealership. It was supposed to be solid with trees and landscaping, well, sure enough, there is an entrance onto Twenty-second Street, which is why they cut up through Sutter Road. That was supposed to go straight out between the two car dealerships, the Chandler Road. Um, and so, like we've said, they're cutting up Albert, Albert Road, and all those heavy vehicles are also cutting up there. The question is, why we could not put a entrance-exit point on Twenty-Fifth Street? I know there's a school there, but there is also an island. If you were to extend that island a few feet, they could easily come out and make a right-hand turn and go straight down to Chandler. Because we already have all the traffic that wants to avoid that traffic light at Chandler and Twenty-Fifth Street, cutting through our neighborhood. So I don't see that, um, you know, these people are gonna go through all the side streets to, they're not gonna go straight down Albert because they don't wanna hit the lights, they're gonna come up again through the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Quickly, yes.
Again, Janice Stover, seventy-eight-ten, South Twenty-Fourth Street. I think the first thing I wanna, I, all I wanna really address is, these gentlemen at least have been very kind enough to share plans with us, which we greatly appreciate. Prior to the hearing, I have one, one last concern, and that would be the trash. And I don't think that should butt up against anybody's house. I think it should be out and away, not only from the complexes, but from our houses as well. So, I know Barb visited with you a little bit about that, but I think that needs to be addressed because nobody wants the dumpsters right by their house. And that's it, I promised, one minute.
You did, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, if not, I'm going to close the public hearing, or actually, I'm gonna bring the applicant back up to address questions, excuse me, yes.
I'll speak on the, uh, engineering and design, uh, items that, uh, were, concerns that were expressed by the residents. And then, uh, there'll be a couple items that, uh, Ryan needed to address. I'm not privy to.
Fair enough.
Uh, first off, the retaining wall, uh, that they're discussing is shown on the plat. Uh, I think that was a carry-through from the original plat. If you look at our plan designs, we do not intend to put in a retaining wall anywhere on the site. Um, we could flip up our grading plan, uh, probably the net sheet would be my guess. I'll keep going.
I don't have.
You don't have it?
Sorry, we don't have the grading plan on here. We just have the site plan and the landscape plan.
We don't even start disturbing ground until, in our proposed grading plan, until we're about thirty or forty feet from the right-of-way of Twenty-Fifth. So, so we don't intend to construct any retaining walls. And certainly, we can remove that note from the plat. Like I said, I think it's a carryover from the original plat. Why it was on the original plat, I don't know. Um, but there's no reason for it to be there because we don't intend to build a retaining wall. Uh, in regards to drainage, um, the entire subdivision, at least all the paved areas, um, they're all being collected in storm sewer and taken into an existing storm sewer on the north edge of the apartment complex. And from there, they'll be carried into an existing, uh, retention pond. It's just east of the, uh, apartment complex to the east. Um, so there shouldn't be any, uh, drainage problems caused from that in the streets. Like I said, everything is being collected and it's being carried to the storm sewer to the north. Um, as far as access goes, I'm sorry. Um, you know, our access has basically been dictated by the city. Um, we're not allowed to have access off Twenty-Fifth. Um, we'd probably like it. Um, we were given the right to have a write-in, write-out off of, uh, Chandler. Um, which is good. Um, but certainly if the s- the city would grant us access off Twenty-Fifth, I'm sure that our developers would be thrilled by that. Um, Toyota dealership, we can't do anything about that. Um, the existing traffic problems they have, we can't do anything about that, other than maybe we could install some speed mounds, uh, in the neighborhood. Um, to at least slow traffic down. Um, certainly, we could install a privacy fence all along the south property line from Chandler. Um, to our access off Albert. I'm sorry, off, from Twenty-Fifth to our access off Albert. Um, that shouldn't be a problem. Um, moving the dumpster, um, around to the west shouldn't be a problem to get it off that backside next to people's houses. Um, as far as dust goes, uh, we'll, we have notes in our erosion control plans, or will, basically it's required by the state. Um, they're supposed to limit that dust during construction. Now, I can't control what the contractor does or does not do on-site because obviously I'm not there. Um, but the contractors, it's not supposed to be generating large amounts of dust. And they shouldn't have been generating large amounts of dust when they built Casey's. It's, again, it's prohibited by the state. Um, we had shown quite a bit of landscaping on our plan. Um, certainly, if the city would allow us to reduce the amount of trees that we have shown, uh, I'm sure our developer would be thrilled by that since it would cost less money. Um, the thinking was that, you know, we, we want, we wanted a lot of trees because they looked nice. Um, and we also wanted to sort of create a, a little bit of a visual barrier between the apartment complex and the housing subdivision to the south, as well as create a visual barrier from the streets to the north and the west. Um, but certainly if the city so, will allow us to reduce that landscaping, uh, we don't have any problems with that. Uh, as far as the other items they mentioned, uh, pets, uh, property maintenance, maintenance in regards to trash, uh, snow, uh, subsidized housing, I'm going to turn those over to, uh, uh, Mr. Durant.
Thank you.
Feels good to take that off. I know how my kids feel all day. My name is, uh, Ryan Durant, Leventon North Skyline Drive, Elkhorn, Nebraska. I am here on behalf of, uh, the developer. Um, and I, and I would like to address as many concerns as I can. Obviously, I will not, um, be able to address them all. Uh, but I, I certainly want to let you know. Um, I've actually looked at this site, uh, since two thousand fourteen. Um, the same developer that, that did Walnut Creek, uh, used the exact same financing that we received. Uh, so they are very similar in their financing structure. Uh, that same developer was going to put a hundred and twenty units up on the site at one point. Uh, it didn't work out. Um, and so I just want to say that I think we're minimizing impact here. We're about eight units an acre, uh, a- a- as it is today. Um, and then with the commercial piece, I think it'll be, uh, a nice little corner there for you guys. Um, like I said, Walnut Creek, same financing. Um, it's the tax credit program through NIFA. It's a very regulated program, meaning that, uh, NIFA, uh, checks on the tenant files. They also check on the, uh, the project itself to make sure that, uh, the property is kept up. Uh, and then we actually have an investor who sends out somebody on an annual basis. And they also come out and check the property and can write things up. So there's a lot of eyes on this property, not including any s- city code enforcement stuff that would come up. So, um, we will have a third-party property manager, um, uh, on-site uh, to, you know, address any ongoing maintenance, uh, issues. Um, you know, landscaping thing came up. That's obviously per city code. Uh, can't do anything about that. Um, but, you know, I've, I've, I have reached out to the HOA, uh, Ms. Lemoine, and I've, I've told her that I will be around, uh, for the entire project. And so if things come up during construction, she has my phone number. She can call me at any time. And we will address those things as they come up. Um, it's, it's not perfect. You know, construction's not perfect. Things aren't perfect. And so, you know, we, uh, we'll ask, you know, that they work with us and just communicate with us. And, and, and so, um, you know, we're, we think it's a good project. Uh, we think it's a good use of, of the land. Um, we don't think it's a huge impact. It certainly could be a lot more. Uh, so we would just ask that, uh, you know, uh, you look at this as, um, you know, a good, good use. And I think it's definitely within your purview. So, um, if you have any other questions for me, I'd happy, have, happy to take them. Otherwise, uh, I will go sit down.
I have one, I guess, for you.
Sure.
With the, you said there's a lot of eyes on the property with the financing and the investors. How long does that go on?
So, it's fifteen years, um, is the initial. Um, and then, uh, after that, um, the one investor basically goes out. Um, but NIFA is still part of the compliance beyond that. So they're still around for a lot of years. There's still a lot of compliance that goes on after that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Yes.
The residents had talked about, uh, construction traffic through their neighborhood.
Uh, I certainly can see how construction traffic through their nover- neighborhood is a concern. Uh, I'm going to guess that the reason Casey's did that is because the city would not allow them to access construction traffic off of Chandler. Um, we think it would be a good idea to have construction traffic in or off Chandler or off of Twenty-Fifth, as opposed to try and go through residential neighborhood streets. Um, but whether or not the city will allow that, I, I don't know. I mean, basically, that'll be up to the city. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there that, uh, I think we would prefer to bring construction traffic not off Albert. Um, but, you know, I don't know if the city's going to tie my hands on that. So.
Thank you. Quickly.
They never addressed the concerns about the, uh, senior citizen home, which is directly next door. I'm talking thirty feet away. Uh, there's no, there's no, there's no fence, there's no, they're not going to put no partition through there so kids don't run through the property to get to the gas station. They never addressed it one time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, public hearing is closed. I'm turning this over to commissioners. Questions? Comments?
Question, question for staff, yeah. A couple of things. First, um, uh, the senior housing they talk about, it has a connection that's supposed to come to the west to connect to this, but this site plan doesn't show that. I'm just trying to understand traffic flow. Is that going to connect through or no?
No, that's by design. So, um, originally, when this area was planned for all residential, that access would be to connect to the current property. Also, under the current site plan and the current zoning, it would support a density of almost two hundred units. That was the reason for that access through Walnut Creek. When staff looked at this, originally, the connection was there. And, um, myself and Public Works requested that it not connect based on the commercial proposed to the north, as well as the low density of the apartments. Again, they're doing about a fourth of what is in that current site plan. Um, so that is by design that that connection is not there. And that's based on the site plan in front of you versus the current approved site plan.
Okay, second question is if they were not splitting this into two lots and leaving it all one big lot, they would not even be ahead of us today requesting this, right? They could go build apartments tomorrow and not even ask for permission, correct?
Correct. Like I said, the current site plan supports almost two hundred apartments. That site plan was approved by City Council in oh-six. So, all of this development was done. All of those houses were constructed. All of that was done, um, with this zoning and this site plan in place. So, you know, someone built a house to the south of there. It was done with this site plan in place that would support almost two hundred units on this property.
Yeah, just to make sure you guys understand that as neighbors. We, we are listening, but they could, they could come in today and build two hundred units there and we would have no say or no conversation at all. So I think, being the fact that the developers have brought that to you guys and at least shared that and listened to some of your concerns, I think that's, that's very, very beneficial to you as opposed to having two hundred units there without a whole lot of say from the city. Thank you.
I also want to address a couple things that came up in regards to access. Access on Twenty-Fifth Street will not happen. Um, the current plat restricts access onto Twenty-Fifth, also restricts access onto Chandler. Um, our engineers looked at the option, looked at the idea of having access on either, um, Twenty-Fifth and/or Chandler. Uh, the Twenty-Fifth is a non-starter, not going to happen as far as our engineers are concerned. It's just not feasible with the school there and, you know, what's happening in the current conditions. That's why it was restricted in the first place. Um, the engineering team for the applicant did provide additional information that, um, supports, and our engineering staff is comfortable with that restricted right-in, right-out access onto Chandler, similar to what Casey's has. Um, again, one of the benefits of having the BG PCO propose zoning on that commercial lot is that commercial property will have to come back through this process for site plan approval. Um, so the City Council, the city will have more control, more say-so at such time a commercial development is brought forth.
Question, Tammy, then, if I'm looking at this map correctly, which I believe that face is north, how does that line up then with the senior housing that's currently there? There'll just be a roadway and then there's like a gap and then it's the senior housing parking lot roadway?
Correct. So, the access through to the commercial lot is right here. My mouse is down onto, uh, Albert Street. And again, the current site plan has always planned for access onto Albert Street, particularly with the current density that would be supported.
And in terms of the fence that the developer offered would be okay to put in, which again, requests the neighbors, I understand, because, uh, folks with the interior cannot put a fence up. Is that something we can make as a, as a requirement?
It could be. Um, as part of site plan approval, if Planning Commission wants to make that recommendation, they could. Other thing I would point out in regards to dumpsters, they're showing dumpster up here, which would abut the commercial development. Um, you don't have any neighbors. The other dumpster shown is right here. So the current housing is here, here. Um, but you, you have, and also, design standards dictate that you have to have a trash enclosure. And I'll say that it has to be pretty. Um, the trash enclosure can't be a fence. Um, it has to be built of the, constructed of the similar material to the building. So typically, what people do is a CMU, um, enclosure that matches what those buildings are. Um, again, that's dictated with design standards and through the building permit process. Um, in regards to landscaping, the applicant is correct. Um, staff typically ask the applicant to do more landscaping just because they have multifamily developments under our design standards have a very stringent requirement as far as minimum landscaping and what they must do. Um, that serves two purposes, aesthetics, but also creates, you know, a buffer and creates, um, it helps that impact upon adjacent development. So, that is, the developer's correct in that. I'm sure they would love to do less landscaping. Um, but that is something that is dictated by current city ordinance.
Again, just historically, my memory of this site, it's probably been almost twenty years. It got annexed into the city. No development occurred. I think the developer went bankrupt. It got de-annexed so they could create an SID. They had no starters in terms of who was going to come in and develop. Uh, as I recall, the partners who owned it got into a dispute with each other. And one of the gentlemen basically broke off that fifteen acres where all the housing is, that I think all of you live in, on that southwest corner. And, uh, we had that approved for housing. And that was the first development that went in there. Again, with the frontage on Kennedy Freeway, obviously, car dealerships made fen- made sense. Eventually, those went in. Uh, the development next to Chandler, again, commercial certainly makes sense on a main corridor. And between the housing and Chandler where the main commercial development will be, multifamily makes sense. And as Ms. Palm indicated, it's been zoned that way for almost two thousand four, two thousand six, somewhere in there.
Thousand six.
Um, the senior housing that's there already, obviously, that's multifamily. Sounds like everybody's getting along okay with the senior family. Um, we're certainly not going to, uh, take any position here based on what economic, um, income the folks that live there may have. That's beyond our purview. We do not do zoning based on economic ability of people and where they live. Uh, but multifamily certainly makes sense there as a buffer between housing and development. And again, from, from my look at this, it seems like it fits all the, all the parameters for what development would be. And as Mr. Arnie and others have stated, uh, currently, if they weren't breaking off that commercial piece on the north side, we would never have any, uh, any say on what development goes in there because it's already zoned for multifamily. So if a multifamily developer came in, wanted to develop over two hundred units, they would have the ability to do so with no further process. So I would respectfully suggest for the housing folks, I appreciate this will be a change from the empty lot that was there, uh, but this is a lot lower density than what could be coming. Um, I wish we could have a better traffic solution going out to Chandler instead of everything dumping out onto Albert. But again, the way these interior streets got developed over time, uh, we're ending up with a lot there that it has to tie in. And that's where they're going to tie it. So we'll try to do what we can to protect you with some fencing and things, but beyond that, I guess, take Mr. Durant upon his offer and during construction, if you're having issues with construction trucks and whatnot, give him a call. I apologize for what happened other, I, I guess with the other developments you had with Casey's. That should not be the case and they should have come and taken care of the issues if they were running over your lawns and breaking sprinkler heads. But, uh, beyond that, from a zoning perspective, this is a good project and looks to me like it fits in the, fits in the area.
Commissioners, your wishes? Any more comments? Questions?
If there's no further discussion, I would make a motion. I would move to approve this application based on compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, lack of perceived negative impact and conformance with the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. I would also require that we do get fencing on the south side of the development so that the north side of Albert basically would be shielded, uh, from the neighborhood to the south. And I would also move, in accordance with number twelve on our application there, that our future land use map of the comprehensive plan, uh, be updated to allow for the commercial use that we would be approving on that corner of Twenty-Fifth and West Chandler.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ackley, a second by Casey. Please vote. Please vote.
All voted yes. Motion carried.
Okay, this motion has been approved. Again, this is a recommendation that goes to the City Council for a public hearing on October twentieth.
Appreciate everybody coming out.